Please be standing for a moment of silence for our victims of the terrible shooting out in California and the wildfires that are taking a lot of lives out there right now. Thank you. Okay, Wolton meeting up to public comment. We'll move right into our special presentation.
Well, we like to say at the elementary school that we're the first place that students start to learn character education, but we cannot take credit for what is, what we're going to acknowledge this evening. We have a young man with us this evening, I'm sure learned this from his parents, and so this, this award is just as much for his parents as it is for him. Trevor Coats, one of our 4th grade students, found money in our parking lot, and he was on his way out to an appointment, he stopped, picked up the money, brought it back into the school office. So, we really want to acknowledge his act of graciousness, and he didn't just pick it up and put it in his pocket, he made sure that it came into the office. So, Trevor, come on up here, we're going to get a picture, we'd like to recognize you. We really need more people like you in this world. All right, we're going to get a nice picture, and a newspaper.
Great job.
I'm limited to what I can do. It's pretty cold, Trevor.
Okay, Highland Middle School, our student of the month is Jason Guerrero. Jason, congratulations. He's new to us this year, and immediately impressed his teachers with his conscientiousness, his dedication to his work, his ability to make friends and care and be compassionate for others, helping out in the cafeteria regularly, just all around great natured, great student, we'd love to have you at our school, congratulations.
It's my pleasure to introduce you to Angelica Silva. For those who don't know her, Angelica, come on up here so I can say nice things about you and embarrass you a little bit. Angelica is a kind, caring, conscientious woman who perseveres in any endeavor she undertakes. Angelica volunteers a tremendous amount of time to our school and our community. Just some of them include a clothing drive every year, she helps clean the tables at Ribfest at the county fairgrounds, she's involved with the Spring Fest in Highland, she's involved with planning and setup for the senior citizens prom each year, she volunteers her time to set up the Christmas events in town, she volunteers her time for the Halloween festivities in town. She also volunteers at the Ronald McDonald House, she helps stuff backpacks for the backpack program that serves underprivileged children, she helps maintain the high school garden during the summer and during the school year, she volunteered to assist school administration with student focus groups in an attempt to improve our school culture, she has been a member of the interact club, art club, multicultural club, and she helped start an environmental club last year, and she's also president of our GSA club. She's also participated, she has participated in track, and she has played high school soccer for four years. After talking to her, I learned that Angelica would like to focus on both the fine arts and nursing when she starts college in the fall. According to Mr. Moriarty, her US history teacher from last year, Angelica is a great student who thinks about the world, our environment, and how to make it a better place to live. So, most recently, Angelica was awarded the Martelli Award for Service, which is a Section 9 soccer scholarship. She received this honor on Sunday, November 4th, from Section 9 officials and from Anthony Martelli himself. For these reasons and many, many more that are not listed here, I'm honored to name Angelica Silva Highland High School Student of the Month for November 2000.
Smile. Good?
He's got to do it, guys.
David redo the whole thing.
Ready? I got this song? Again, we have the entire board, congratulations for student of the month. Still have another special presentation?
So, this year, as many of you know, we started a STEM program at the high school. I'm very excited to introduce some of our STEM students and their teacher, Mr. Watts. Mr. Watts, where are you? How do we turn this on, Carol?
The remote, I told...
Oh, please turn, please turn.
It's on, it's on the podium, the remote for the TV.
Oh, the remote, sorry, I should have known that.
I think I pointed it out to some of those students.
There you go, okay.
Do you need some room? Oh, now I'm over here doing this? No, they'll, they'll take care of that. Want to, kids, want to jump up here?
Yeah.
They will. So, good evening, everyone, thank you very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for creating this wonderful opportunity for our students. It is my humble opinion that it will fasten increase their capability along with their potential success in college and in life. So, several students have showed up tonight to talk about the program, and they're the ones who want this to come anyway, so I'm going to turn it over to Simon Mizell and Tyler Soler, Sophia Premier, Emily, and...
There are two classes in the STEM program this year, in the Mr. Watts' STEM class this
year. So, there's Computer Science and Principles of Engineering. I think me, Simon, Emily, and Nick are all in the Computer Science, and then me and Tyler are both in the Principles of Engineering. These are just pictures of us working. We, we've been using a, like a coding website that teaches us to code. We learned about different coding languages, and the one that we've most focused on is Java.
Computer science is especially vital to any modern curriculum because it's, especially given the recent question towards STEM, our careers of the future are greatly in machinery and sciences, especially computer science, but only a minuscule portion of scientists end up going into the computer field. However, it's, the supply is extremely low, demand is extremely high. There are 34,000 open computer science jobs currently in New York State alone, 500,000 nationwide. It's, it's an extremely desirable opportunity, but it's not provided for by most schools. The vast majority of parents want their children to do it, and the vast majority of students want to do it as well. Emily, would you like to talk about why I enjoy the class?
All right, so I think I'm going to talk about some minutes, but so we'd like to thank the board and like to thank the administration for allowing us to have this class, it's a great opportunity, so thank you guys so much. And I'm going to turn it over to Nick.
All right, so I'm going to talk about why I like the Computer Science class. I think it's awesome, so again, I, I also thank you guys, it's very awesome you can have this. So, like Simon said, computer science is very useful, okay? You know, it's a developing field, it's very important, and people who, who have experienced computer science are more likely to be successful. And the class is also very fun, it's awesome because the class is self-paced, so we can, the people who are farther ahead are able to help people who are behind out. So, Simon here, for example, has a lot more experience than I do in computer science, so he, he's helped me with a few projects, he's very helpful. And also Watts is a very fun teacher, Mr. Watts is a great guy, we really enjoy having classes, so thank you very much.
And there's Simon helping, helping us with our coding when we have no idea what to do. So, the next class is Principal, I forgot it over here, Principles of Engineering. So, in Principles of Engineering, we, we build like a, a few different projects throughout the year, so right now we're doing our bridge building unit, and then I think next we're working on an aviation unit, so we're building like airplanes, not real airplanes, like, you know. So, so here we, we're building bridges out of, we have a bunch of different materials that we can use, and we are trying to, we're graded based off of how much weight the bridge can hold, divided by how much the bridge actually weighs. So, you, basically you want to make it hold as much and weigh the least amount. And these are some of our bridges, and pieces of our bridges, and there's like a cool net design, someone tried to make out a string. Tyler, would you like to...
I mean, so, I mean, it's been a really great opportunity this year because like for me, I love hands-on projects, you know, compared to a lot of other classes where you're doing a lot of textbook work and you're just basically taking notes in this class, you're really able to go hands-on with your projects, and you're, you're building alongside someone who actually knows what they're doing, like Mr. Watts, you know, it's, it's an incredible experience.
Yeah, and what's really great is once, once our bridges are, well, to test the bridges, you put them on this, on the stand, and then you, you put weight on them, and as much weight as it can hold, and then once it breaks, Mr. Watts pulls it aside, takes our, like, the broken bits of our bridges, bridges, and he, yeah, basically he's like, "Ha ha, you failed." So, he, he's like, "Okay, so where did you see this break? Where, where can you, how can you improve on this?" And then we build a new version, and we try to make it hold more weight and improve our grade.
How much weight have the bridges held up to that point?
96 pounds is the, is the maximum right now.
That's just with the, the popsicle sticks and Elmer's glue.
Wow. Great. So, it should be good. And a lot of the students that go to college, this is their main complaint, is they, they're given this box of stuff and told to create something as an engineer, and they're a little handicapped in that, they've, they've never done anything like this before, so we're hoping this will help them out a lot in engineering.
Any questions from the board members?
This is 11th grade, 12th, which grade?
It's elective, so anyone can take it, I have everyone from freshmen to seniors, but mostly juniors and seniors.
And it's both a full-year courses?
Right now it's a half-year course, we're trying to squeeze everybody in, so we did an AP-SE, but hopefully we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to, you know, looking forward, we'd love to see an AP Computer Science class, we'd love to see a full-year POE class.
My question is the difference, is there something in your plan to try to expand on?
Yes, absolutely. We hope in the next, within the next couple of years to have many of the students in the Computer Science classes take the AP Computer Science class and to expand, especially with the, with the new technology teacher at the middle school, we believe that within the next couple of years, when the students get to the high school, they'll be prepared to take it to the next level. We have high hopes and high expectations.
But if you recall, this year, this was the new program, so besides teaching a, a new class, Mr. Watts had to go out and kind of sell the program, and you know, he went to the study hall, and then we discussed it earlier in the year, so this year, when we start doing course selection in late winter, you know, that, if this will be, these classes will be an option for students.
Last year, I had the, the opportunity to take AP Computer Science at a 150 level at SUNY Ulster. It was, it was a winter semester course, so half of the year, and it was greatly enjoyable. It was, the work was difficult, but it was, it was very fun. It was deeply rewarding, and I, Mr. Watts is actually currently looking into taking the class. I think it's something that a, a large portion of our student body could do and will be able to. A recent Highland graduate, Justin Hoffman, is now professor of Computer Science at Alton. It's, it's definitely something that should be around for quite a while to come.
Any other question, board?
This is great stuff.
Thank you for letting us know.
I'd like to thank the students and Mr. Watts, everything they've done, certainly more than just the presentation, but to leave it all for us for, so thank you so much. I know the students, even the students of the month, I know you probably have homework to do, so before we get moving on, the rest of the meeting, feel, do not feel funny if you have to go home and get your homework done.
Good job, parents.
Great job. Good night.
Okay, we'll move on. Acceptance of reports. Please refer to Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent. Students acknowledge you due to following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes for October 2nd, 2018, and October 16th, 2018, and our period one attendance will involve one report from for October. Can I have a motion, please? Move our suit second by the meal. Discussion. Okay, although the favor. Okay. Under curriculum and instruction or principal monthly report, Bill?
Hello again. So, one thing I'd like to add, we, we had our PTA meeting this, this past month, and we decided our Parents as Reading Partners program that goes on in the spring, we wanted to put a theme to it, so space is something that we're looking into, and PTA just got back to me today, looks like we are going to, very tentatively right now, I don't want to make it too big of a thing, because the STAR lab at SUNY New Paltz has a site that actually comes through the school and can set up like a planetarium type situation for our students. It's very hard to get six days in a row, and that's how many days I would need to get all of our students through, so we're working with PTA to try to get that here sometime either in April or in May. It takes a large space, so it will take up our entire library. The reason we chose, chose the library, one, it has the high ceiling, but also has the glass windows, so as the students go by, the interest will be piqued during that entire time, so fingers crossed that we can nail that down, because that will be an incredible way to cap off our Parents as Reading Partners initiative that we do every year. And that's my only update, I saw you guys three nights ago, so if you have any other questions, and I look forward to telling you more about that program when we have it.
Just wanted to touch base again, let everybody know that on Thursday is our career fair, third annual. Give a shout out to Megan, it's a ton of work to put this together, all the invitations, all the people you have to contact, all the supplies, all the setup, the table rentals, it goes on and on, but if you can, if you get a minute and you can stop in just to see what happens, and when the kids go around and see all these different people that are in the, in, in their professions and can speak to them, and their faces light up about, "Wow, I could do this when I grow up," it's really dramatic to see it. So, that, that's Thursday, it starts at 8:30, goes to 1:30-ish, somewhere in that time frame, all right? Also, next week, on Monday and Tuesday, the half-days, our 8th graders will be in groups presenting their projects, I've mentioned it several times in the, in my monthly report, this is the culmination of quite a bit of work on invasive species. Each student has done, a group of students has done a presentation, done research, research about this, and will be presenting in front of their peers, so it's quite an exciting time, and there's a whole rubric developed, it's all, it's, it should be pretty well done, so looking forward to it, and I hope that we have a couple of them come to the next board meeting in December and present to you their project. Bill, all right? Any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Dan. Bill? So, good evening again, I have a couple of brief additions to the principles report. On November 1st, the Fed Challenge Club went on, went on a VIP tour with members of Highland Rotary and Morgan Stanley of the New York Stock Exchange. They saw the CNN and Fox News and MSNBC studios, and they got to observe MSNBC filming when they went there. They also got to observe the financial district, so you're going to hear a little bit more about this when Chrissy gives her report in a few minutes, I don't want to steal all that from her. So, you got to hand out, but what I want to show off is the Highland High School Art Department has chosen a selection of artwork to be displayed for the month of November at the Bosse's Conference Center in New Paltz, and that's, this picture that you're looking at, that's, this, pictures are displayed, and Mr. L, asking me to point out that on the left side, you'll see, they did take a field trip earlier in the year to Georgia O'Keefe presentation and display, and that was inspired by Georgia O'Keefe, those of you who are familiar with her artwork can see that influence there. So, it'll be up to the remainder of the month in, at Ulster Bosse's in New Paltz, so we're very excited about that. On the other side of your handout is the photocopy of the Southern Ulster Times, and it says, "On Saturday, October 21st, 26 students from the Highland National Honor Society did community service by picking up over 300 pounds of garbage." The Highland National Honor Society is participating in the Adopt a Highway program, and they clean one and a half mile stretch on Route 9W, their next clean update is in the spring. So, they generally go twice a year, and they often get a photo opportunity, and they're off in the newspaper, that's what we're going to check out with you, I'm very proud of them, yes.
I saw the kids out there.
You saw them out there picking up 300 pounds of garbage, that's, that's the garbage, considering it's a piece of paper at a time, right? That's impressive.
It is, that's great, that's really great.
Use the seat, guys.
You know, my meetings every month, I love, they get, these displays get a lot of attention, so.
They do.
And I, New, or Highland always does a great job with their display, too, there, and they pick really great samples, and it always looks well put together, and all, all three buildings represented, too, it's not just the high school.
Oh, it's not just the high school, I'm sorry, yes, it is all three.
Yeah, the middle school, elementary school, have worked there as well, man.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Bill, I, I really appreciate your report, you know, not to put a down on this, but the dropout that you have, is there a procedure that you have to follow for a child to be dropping out?
I wonder if that particular dropout, we, we had one just recently returned, so I, I wonder, I believe it's the same person.
Oh, okay, all right.
It depends on each case is separate, is, is individual, of course, everybody has their own individual reason for dropping out, we never publish that, but the example that I'm thinking of, there was a very specific circumstance where the student had to, very often, this particular dropout wasn't one of our students, he, he or she came to us later in their high school career, and already came with a set of circumstances that set them apart. Usually, when there is a very rare, you know, when it does happen, someone drops out, there's been many, many layers and interventions.
Yes.
Yes. So, there's, right, there's...
It's always the last.
At that point, we've exhausted every possibility, every opportunity that we could get.
That's good, that's good. Hope to see it.
We realize it, it's never, it's never, something that comes easy to people.
Well, thank you for such fantastic awareness, yeah.
Yes, you're welcome.
I just wanted to recognize the article that was sent along, this Thursday night, which I thought was a very, very awesome article, so congratulations.
Thank you, it was just in the right place, the right time at a conference, I met somebody who was interested in what I was saying, so, so they wrote an article about it. And that's really, really testament to the board, and thank the board for supporting that our administrators can go to conferences, meet in conferences out of the area, you know, the state, because it really expands your horizons, and you, and you get to network and meet somebody easily that you would not have met, so. So, I was at the National Principals Conference in Chicago in July, and now I have a contact with Education Week, a journalist for Education Week, that I can always reach out to if need for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thank you very much. Okay, we have a good majority of our directors here, does anyone have any questions on the director's report?
Patrick, on the, when I see children going to Ulster Bosse's versus Dutch's Bosse's, is it because of the programs that are being offered in Dutch's that are not offered here? Okay.
Majority of the time, yeah. So, anytime we have a student where we determine that we don't have the appropriate program here, the first place we always refer is Ulster Bosse's. So, sometimes they're not accepted for various reasons, so then we'll have to refer to Dutch's Bosse's or to a private placement.
Oh, okay.
We always try to use Ulster Bosse's first when we come to that point with a student, but it's not, they don't always have all the programs that we would need.
And are we still working to see if we can have any kids come back in district?
We do it all the time, we are bringing them back throughout the year. I will say, over the last two years, we've brought back at least four students each year, just brought another one back a couple weeks ago.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, our numbers there are decreasing.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear.
We met, as you saw, I met with Dr. Shanker, too, to just talk about our programs, and he likes to learn about kids that we have, maybe in districts that could potentially end up in a program there, where, you know, for various reasons, whatever it is, but, and just to learn more about their programs, and they want to know what we need as well.
Right. Thanks.
Are we, how are we doing with our Medicaid reimbursement? Are we maximizing every opportunity?
As much as we can, one of the difficult parts right now is trying to get client identification numbers from parents, you know, it's a card that they have that they don't always have on them, to try to get this information is difficult, to ask for it at a meeting, it's not easy, so all districts are struggling with trying to get that, they just put something out from the state that they're, I think it's either March or April of 2019, they're proposing a different way for us to get that information, so we'll be able to bill for more students. So, just beyond getting the consent to bill for it, we need all of these other steps and these numbers that we don't always get access to, so if you're...
Is there just no one vote for a very perceived stigma to it?
Could be a little bit of everything, sometimes they don't know the number, sometimes they don't get back to you, they don't have to share, so, you know, it can be up to them. So, as much as we can, we are, they are coming for, they're calling it kind of like a training slash audit in December, so we can pick up on anything else that we are missing on something, we'll have a chance to work with them, so we can maximize it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Patrick, also, just a question on the transportation for the foster care, you have noted in there that it's the responsibility district of attendance, is that, that's always been the way it is, right?
It's a little different from McKinney-Vento laws, so McKinney-Vento laws, it's the district of... from parents. You know, it's a card that they have, that they don't always have on them. To try to get this information is difficult, to ask for it at a meeting. It's not easy. So all districts are struggling with trying to get that. They just put something out from the state that they're, I think it's either March or April of 2019, they're proposing a different way for us to get that information, so we'll be able to bill for more students. So just beyond getting the consent to bill for it, we need all of these other steps and these numbers that we don't always get access to. So if you're gonna...
Is there just no one to vote for, or is there a perceived stigma towards it?
Could be a little bit of everything. Sometimes they don't know the number, sometimes they don't get back to you, they don't have to share, so, you know, it can be up to them. So as much as we can, we are, they are coming for, they're calling it kind of like a training slash audit in December, so we can pick up on anything else that, if we are missing on something, we'll have a chance to work with them, so we can maximize it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Patrick, also, just a question on the transportation for the foster care. You have noted in there that it's the responsibility of the district of attendance? Is that, that's always been the way it is, right?
It's a little different from McKinney-Vento laws.
Okay.
So McKinney-Vento laws, it's the district of origin.
Origin.
So at the webinar, that was the biggest thing that came out of it. It's now the district of attendance will be responsible.
So that is a new.
That is, yeah, that's a change.
Do we see that that's gonna have a significant impact on us, or any impact, do we know?
I'll say, we don't know for sure, because we won't know, but I don't think it's gonna be, as of right now, it's not a dramatic impact.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna thank Carol and the rest of the administrative team for the presentation that you gave last week. I think the district is moving in the right direction insofar as technology, and hopefully that whole plan can come to fruition, and we can share it with the rest of the district and move forward on it. So I appreciate the hard work that you and the rest of the administrative team put together today.
Would you like to add a recommendation?
Okay, we'll move to approval of Committee on Special Education. Be resolved, Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendation of the Committee on Special Education according to the minutes of the CSE meeting of August 28th along with the month of October 1st, 9th, 11th, 23rd, 25th, 26th, and 30th. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meeting, October 12th and 16th. And the CSE meeting, no meeting, transferred to the amendments there along with the month of October 2nd. Motion, please. Motion by Ed, seconded by Tom. Discussion? All of the favor? Posed, so carried. Approval of Committee on Preschool Special Education, be resolved, Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendation of the Committee on Preschool Special Education according to the minutes of CPSC meeting of October 10th, 17th, and 24th. CPSC amendment, no meeting, October 1st. CPSC, no meeting, transferred in Beaver, none to, there are none to report. This committee authorizes the arrangements for such students' special education programs and services. Motion, please. Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion? All of the favor? Posed. Motion carried. Personnel, are we ready to take personnel out of block? Through? Four G. Everybody else? If we have a block, or if we can all do the recognition of those that are here, anything? So we have a motion to move personnel to block from A through 4G. Motion by Tom, seconded by Ed. Discussion?
Is that in middle school, or is that in high school?
Well, it's really encompassing, middle school and both schools. It's always been both schools.
Anyone else?
I wish Ed would hold our congratulations at this regard. He commuted quite a ways away, correct? Yeah, I recall.
That can be tough.
Yeah. Well, yeah, like, like just guy over here.
Any other discussion? All of the favor? Posed. So carried.
So Mr. President, yes, I'd just like to recognize, first, the board for supporting the paid advisorships. I'm a firm believer in getting students involved in clubs, you know, we talked about dropouts, and that's one of the number one things to avoid dropouts, is getting students involved in something after school is over. So thanks to those teachers. I've already heard kids talking about these clubs, just in the whole base. So thank you very much to those advisors. We have been solely but surely filling our security attendant positions. So Demetrius Katsadis, you know, Mr. Dini, Mr. Katsadis is here, thank you very much. Mr. Katsadis, he started back on October 22nd. The middle school is doing an excellent job at the middle school, and then, I know our other attendant couldn't be here tonight, but he'll be starting tomorrow at the elementary school. We have Rebecca Runk is here. Rebecca, give a wave. She'll be doing math here at the high school for Stephanie Trapani for child leave, which hasn't happened yet.
Tomorrow.
Okay. It's gonna happen very soon. So thank you, Rebecca, and welcome. And I would also like to mention Ed Holder. So Ed's been here for 10 years as a groundskeeper, and again, before I got here certainly, but from the, what I've, stories I've been told, that our, our fields were in tough shape. And Ed really, you know, whipped our fields into shape and made them among the best grass fields in the area. So it's a lot of hard work keeping up on the grounds, and he really, he owned it, he took a lot of pride in his work, and that's really what we want many employees, to own it, to take pride, and so we thank him for his service and serve him at the end of the district. I wish Ed the best of luck in his retirement.
Okay. And again, on behalf of the board, congratulations to our new hires. We wish them the best of luck here in the Highland Central School District. And again, with regrets to Ed Holder for his service to the district. Much appreciated. Okay, our student rep, Chrissy?
Okay, so there has been a lot going on in the high school over the past month. I can speak for myself and many other students, that the charging stations in the library have been a major hit. There is no longer students going door-to-door to classroom, being, can I borrow your phone charger? Because it's right there, and we're able to use it, and sometimes Miss Fonda's nice and be like, oh, yeah, I'll watch it for you. And she truly does, like, I'll go and I'll be like, Miss Fonda, can you charge my phone? And she's like, of course, honey. And I'm like, oh, thank you. So she's amazing with that. The junior and senior girls are anxiously awaiting their Powderpuff game, which is Tuesday, the 20th, at 6:30, if any of you guys wanna come and support us. Senior girl shirts just came in today, and juniors either ordered their shirts or are ordering their shirts today. I hope they're ordered already. Mathletes team has been participating in the National Math Madness Tournament. The team has met weekly to compete online against schools from around the country to solve math problems in 30 minutes. So far, Highland has defeated private schools from Asheville, North Carolina, Chicago, Illinois, and Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and are advancing in the Sweet 16 round of the single elimination tournament. That takes place tomorrow after school. Fed Challenge also went down to New York City to tour the stock exchange in the financial district. I was on that trip, I had that amazing opportunity. It's truly a once-in-a-lifetime experience. We got to see the bull, and believe it or not, usually there's a ton of people around it, but we each got individual pictures with it, so it was really neat. We thank Rotary and everyone who was able to let us go and have that opportunity.
Can I jump in there, Chrissy?
Of course.
So Dave Lambert, who was, I think, was your board guy. So he works for...
Morgan Stanley.
Morgan Stanley. So Dave is in the Highland Rotary, I'm in Highland Rotary with him. So he's the one who donated the tour to the district, and this was part of last year's Snowball raffles. But then Tony Marmo, who was the president of Rotary, and certainly still in Rotary, does hiring, he bought it for quite a bit of money, and then immediately donated it to the district. And with his whole dream of, hey, I want you to try and bring as many kids as you can, so he set it up between, you know, with Miss Saylor, right?
Mr. Mango.
Yep.
And I'm president, so I had to, we had to...
So it was, you know, a great trip, again, thanks to Dave and Tony.
It was truly not something that, like, you'd expect. Like, I don't know, when I go to, like, when I thought I was going to see the stock exchange and see all the crazy business, like, people running around on the floors, that's not what actually happens. Like, it's actually very calm, and like, people like leisurely walk over to like, say Disney and go, hey, like, you know, it's not something like you would expect. Mala UN also has an upcoming conference at Bard this weekend. There's, I, there's a ton of different committee, committees. There's different topics such as human trafficking and the economic crisis in Venezuela. So our students are really excited to go and participate, so hopefully they'll get some recognitions at the conference. Any questions?
Did you say anything about the Harlem Wizards?
Oh, yes, the Harlem Wizards, thank you! Yeah, so the Harlem Wizards game is on the 27th of November. I'm not sure what time it is.
I think it's seven.
Seven, okay. So, yeah, there's our teachers that are gonna be participating in that, senior class, the money, they're doing a spaghetti dinner, and the money goes towards senior class and French club.
I was there at spaghetti dinner before, though.
Yeah.
In the car.
So it'd be great to see some familiar faces there.
Thanks, Chrissy. Okay, under business in operation, budget transfer be resolved, Board of Education upon a recommendation superintendent approves the following budget transfer for the 2018-19 school year presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 3508 for $30,507.61. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Sue. Discussion? All of the favor? Posed. So carried, budget development calendar, 2019-2020 school year, be resolved, Board of Education, upon a recommendation interim, sorry, superintendent interim. Development calendar for the 2019-2020 school year to get to the board at this meeting. Motion, please. Motion by Sue, seconded by Tom. Discussion? All of the favor? Posed? Will we propose to that?
Can you say something?
I have a signature.
Yes, I do. So, um, no, I guess I don't wanna say anything. So on January 15th, that's when we'll actually have our presentations to the board. That's when they will start.
Okay. Okay.
That was the presentation right there.
Shortened. Okay, Highland Central School District Reserve Plan be resolved, Board of Education, Highland Central School District hereby adopts 2018-19 General Fund Restricted Reserve Plan, reauthorized the following reserves to the Highland Central School District, as authorized by education law and general municipal law reflected in the district's financial statements effective June 30th, 2018. Retirement Contribution Reserve, Reserve for Tax Cert, and the Capital Reserve for Construction. Can I have a motion, please?
Okay.
Seconded by Sue. Seconded by Ed.
Mr. Jolli, why don't you just give a brief description of that just for the public?
Okay. The, there was a new law in December 2016, approved by the state, where we have to have a reserve plan, every school district has to have a reserve plan. We have to submit it annually as part of our annual financial reports. It was reviewed with the Audit Committee. It describes what each reserve is for, when it was introduced or approved by the Board of Public, and what the long-term plan is.
Does anyone have any questions? All of the favor? Posed, so carried. Uncollected taxes be resolved, Board of Education's on recommendation to superintendent of schools, authorizes transferring the uncollected taxes for the 2018 school year to Ulster County in the amount to be determined on November 13th, 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Okay.
Seconded by Sue. Seconded by Ed. Discussion?
Is this in line with last year's figures? I believe it is. I believe it is. I think our office staff did a great job this year. I think it was his first full year for the individual, and very conscientious, very diligent, balanced with the treasurer on a daily basis, so they were both in line, and both are very comfortable and confident on what was submitted. Very good, very pleased.
Lisa, do you have that number 22?
I do. It's, yes, it's $1,428,029.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm gonna pass this for you, students.
Other discussion? Okay. All of the favor? Posed. So carried.
Thank you.
And then I'll go around for our signature. Audit Committee meeting 2019, 2018-19 school year, meeting time for Audit Committee for the main school year are as follows, this is just an FYI, February 2nd, 2019, at 5:30; April 2nd, 2019, at 5:30; and June 11th, 2019, at 5:30.
That should be February 12th.
February 12th?
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah?
Well, it's been a busy month, since, almost since we've seen you. We had, we, I know Tom sent around in his weekly update, the agenda from our half-day superintendent, professional development afternoon. There was a lot of work going on throughout the buildings. Each, each building had a little bit different focus for what they were doing. The elementary school works a lot on the new phonics program for the kindergarten first grade students called Foundations. They have had a full day, P, each grade level, kindergarten, first grade, had a full day professional development with a specialist from Foundations, and then had time on that half-day to really work through and look at the program, and start to really talk about how they're going to integrate it in with our Teachers College reading program. The upper grades, second through fifth, worked on the writers workshop, which is the next element of our ELA program that we're adding this year. So they spent a lot of time working on that. And really, I, I mentioned that I've been, I've met now with every grade level and every department as a group, and one purpose of that was to get an idea of what kinds of professional development the teachers would most like and feel that they need more support with. And across the board, what I knew but was reinforced is they really need time together to work through many of these programs that we're doing. So that's really what we did with this, this half-day. At the middle school, each of the grade levels met together to work on these interdisciplinary projects. Dan mentioned the invasive species project that the eighth grade did. Both sixth and seventh grade are working on similar types of projects that can be carried over across all the grade levels. And the high school worked on looking at past Regents exams and really gap analysis. Karen met with, I think, every grade, or every department except math, but you had met with math previously.
Met previously.
And so they started looking at individual questions, looking at distractors in questions, where, where are students, you know, where's the thinking going wrong on questions with Regents exam? So that was a lot of the work that was done there. Our special areas, math, sci, math, sorry, music, art, and PE met as a group as well across the, across the district. PE is working on our physical education plan that we need to submit to New York State. Part of that is to verify that we have our students in the proper amount of PE time across their, their week. But the other part of it is really looking at the progression of our, our, our physical education program from kindergarten to 12th grade. And they've made a lot of progress on that document, really looking at the standards, looking at the checklist that the state could use if they decide to audit our program. I'm now going to be meeting with each PE group of teachers from each building over the next week to look more closely at what they're doing in each of the buildings. Music department, again, I've mentioned this several different times, but they have new standards, art standards for both music and art. So they met to really look through that and start seeing where we're really following the standards and where we need to add things in. The biggest thing about the new art standards is that they really spiral well from kindergarten up through 12th grade, so we wanna make sure that we're, we're continuing to reinforce key skills and tools as they move through the art and music continuum. And then our support group, the school psychologists, social workers, nurses, guidance counselors, worked together to go through the Columbia Suicide Screening Assessment, which is a set of... which is a, a set of questions and a protocol to go through when a student is showing distress, um, to determine whether they need immediate support from the ASAM, whether, you know, we need to refer to other counseling. Um, this is something then that we can go, that we can do as a standard for, in every building, no matter the age level. Unfortunately, as, again, we've talked about, um, you know, this is something that we're using with our elementary students as well as with our middle and high school students. So it was a very productive, um, conversation. Patrick could probably speak a little bit more to that. Um, but we also, they also looked at the, in the afternoon, um, or later in the afternoon. I had gone to the countywide traumatic response team training that's, that's held, um, at OCS for the entire, everyone in the county, who if there was some event, um, very often a tragedy that occurs in a district, we support that district by sending guidance counselors, psychologists, social workers, um, to, to do whatever really we, they need us to do in that, um, in the building. And it was a great training. I always enjoy going because I, I really learn little tidbits every time I go. This year, one part of that was our support team wanted to start to really look at, okay, if something happened here, what are some of the roles that they will be in? What are some of the roles that we would need outside people to have? Where, where do we think, you know, and it's, it's always, it's always a hypothetical, so you never know exactly what you might do. But, um, of course, the more prepared we can be. And, and one of the things we learned at the training from both CDs was, you know, just having someone who's going around and making sure that everyone has water, has, has a place to go if they're getting a little, if the adults are getting a little overwhelmed by the situation. I mean, some of those questions that you don't really know will be key factors until you're in the middle of it. Um, so they worked on, on starting to, to put together a plan for Highland in the case of that situation. So a, a lot of really good work was done that day. We have our next half-day superintendent's con, or conference day on December seventh, which is coming up soon, shortly after, uh, after the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll be continuing, uh, with some of that work, but we also have a representative from NAMI coming, which is a mental health, um, nonprofit organization that's going to present to our, developed for middle and high school teachers. We'll be presenting, um, around the idea of, of student mental health and mental illness and, um, signs to look for, how to help, how to support. And this is for all staff. Um, and we're also going to be doing some ENL training. Our, uh, one of our in-house ENL teachers is going to be talking about translinguaging, which is a technique for, um, really combining a student's home language, language with English and building deeper understanding. Um, our, our ENL number of students though remains relatively stable. The population has shifted a little bit, so we have a few more students at the middle school than we had in the past. Um, and we're starting to get more students who are coming in with, um, less formal education in their home language, um, which creates another set of circumstances that can be difficult to, um, for, especially for general education teachers, but, but even for our ENL teachers. And one of the requirements for the, um, for teachers certification, to continue their certification, they need to have a hundred hours over five years of professional development. Fifteen percent, so fifteen of those hours must be in ENL. So this is a way that we can provide for our, our staff, but also, of course, help them with a very real need for, for our students. So, um, so we're excited about what we have lined up for December seventh. I'm working on observations, just as last year. I'll be observing every non-tenured teacher in the district. Um, that's starting to be, we have, we're, we're getting a, uh, a newer and newer staff, so that's starting to be more and more, which is really exciting. It's, it's great to be out, um, in the classrooms, seeing our, um, newer teachers. But I'm also, I've helped to allow a little bit to, uh, to wait for Dr. Rocker to, to, to get here, first of all, and then to get a little more acclimated. So, again, it's always exciting for me to be out in the classroom, um, with teachers. So we're, we're working on that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is just a, because I, because I think this happened after our last meeting, was the awards for excellence tonight at, down at Anthony's here and I, where, um, Marion Ingram and Dr. Pat recognized. It was a very, very nice evening and certainly can't say it enough, um, both of the people that we recognized, it's very much deserved for them. And I, it was, it was a very nice evening. It was also a great evening. We saw lots of, lots of people that we've, that have been through the, have been through Highland at various points of time, so it was, it was a nice event.
Any questions, Sarah?
I got a phone call today about transportation, Mr. President. Fantastic phone call. So, uh, a parent called, I haven't even gotten to see our, Ms. McColl, our director, but just a, a parent called and he said, you know, I just, I'm sure you, you get a lot of calls and a lot of areas is negative. I want to call to tell you what a fantastic job the new director's doing and how great the transportation here in Highland is. So thank you very much. I know it's Ms. McColl, but all of our drivers and everyone involved in this. Also, just wanted to reiterate, so, so just thank the board and, and the entire administrative team. With special kudos to Carol and Sarah for a fantastic, uh, board retreat and a great discussion and a vision on our technology moving forward. So that was a very productive night, very enjoyable. Tomorrow, our administrative team and several other people will, um, will be meeting with Chief Wade. And Chief Wade will be coming here tomorrow, we're going to do a tabletop emergency drill. And I don't want to give, give away what they're, we're going to be doing. I'll, I'll give you more detail after the fact, but this, the idea is that just to simulate an emergency and try to think of every possible thing that everyone would need to be doing. So all the administrators, I believe, uh, some of the other support staff, Carly's even going to be there, so. Uh, because she's a big part of it. If, if, if something big happened, you know, if, uh, Sarah and I are both busy, you know, Carly's going to be one of our, you know, frontline people, so. She's also very clever. So it is, uh, that time of year for me to talk about my two-hour delay and snow day procedure. Uh, this certainly is a, uh, not going to be a pun, and even the cold weather, this is often a hot topic on social media. Why'd we do this? Why'd we do that? How come? So for the board, for the people here, but for the public, uh, discussions on the weather often start not just the day prior, I mean, days prior when we know about it. So I've already met with Mr. Miller, uh, today. Uh, but the morning of a weather-related event, whether it's delay or a closing, Mr. Miller and I usually start talking about four twenty AM, four thirty AM. Now by that time, by, right around that time, Mr. Miller has already monitored the radars. He has spoken to neighboring school districts regarding road conditions. He has, uh, reviewed other schools' websites within our county, had input from the highway department. I've reached out to other superintendents on their weather conditions. So we've kind of taken in as much information as we possibly can about that day. Mr. Miller, you know, he, he provides me and I share information I have, but at that point, the final decision is mine. I have to decide, and you can't hem and haw about it. It, it's, there's a very short window of opportunity because you have to start the chains, the, the phone call to, uh, to learn everyone. Really, a final decision has to be made, I said by five fifteen, or really almost before that, between five and five fifteen. The school messenger, does everyone understand, so how come we got it so late? You know, we, we want to get all information we possibly can. And especially on those weather days, just because every district is using the same system. There's a little bit of a delay. There is anywhere from a five to a ten-minute delay. When I make that call, it's when you actually receive the call. That's just the system that we have and the system that's in existence. Um, once a delay or closing is, uh, is determined, certainly the phone calls go out. I personally will call a few people prior to me, uh, sending out the all-call to Sarah, to, to Kathy. Um, the radio stations are told, website's updated. But as always, you know, students and staff safety is our number one priority. Sometimes, as we know, one end of a district, and this is not this district, any district. One end can be sunny and ninety-five degrees and the other end has ice or snow. So you don't always, you know, sometimes people question, how come we had a delay? Uh, well, because this part of the district did have some weather. We wear that, and, and we certainly do our best to err on the side of caution. Knowing though we have, you know, there's a limited number of snow days. I, I, I think we may have added one this year, right? We have seven now? We have seven snow days. Does everyone know, seven snow days? Okay? There's, you know, I, I, I know it is a burden for some parents and it can be very difficult. When I, this is just, again, world according to Bon Jovi, I could get yelled at by the Board President for this. But when I know there's going to be a weather event, if I can say it the night before, hey, there's a two-hour delay, that really, there's a lot of parents and carriers that that helps. So they know that they can arrange, because I, I know it's very difficult, first thing at, you know, five in the morning, you know? Because sometimes, though, it's, it's a surprise, sometimes the weather, you really weren't expecting anything and then if there is snow or, or ice. So, uh, we do do our best. We have seven snow days. We will almost always start with a two-hour delay, I would say, most of the time, unless we absolutely know for sure. I also do not, I'm not a big fan of the early release, okay? But sometimes that can't be avoided. So that means, I mean, we've gone to school and now a weather event is kind of, is going to happen. And again, there's a very small window of opportunity to make that call. Really, that call has to be made by, really by, before the elementary is coming in, and that's the tricky part.
Yes.
Because if word gets out that we're going to be leaving early, sometimes, some parents don't even send their kids. So, no, they, they do, of course they do. Uh, so that's the tricky part there, uh, because you really, we have a set dismissal time, uh, for those early release days, which I know can be a burden on families, because you sometimes, if they both parents work, someone has to leave work to watch the kids. So we do our best to, uh, again, balance safety with practicality. Again, uh, I'm glad you had a great trip, Chrissy. Uh, I do want, Chrissy, do a fantastic job, uh, as our student rep, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And, um, that's all for tonight.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on. Under Board of Education, new business, our overnight school trip to Boston be resolved, Board of Education, based upon the recommendation superintendent approves a two thousand nineteen eighth-grade Boston trip held on April eleventh to April twelfth, presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion. Uh, do you believe the committee is here this evening? Do you have any questions? Is it a little earlier this year than, than past years?
Yeah.
Yes, um, we signed April eleventh, or April eleventh this year, just because of the, uh, the winter break, so the state testing, or, excuse me, spring break, um, some of the state testing that did come up. So it is a little earlier. Um, there were some changes to the itinerary due to the fact that the harbor might still be frozen on April eleventh. So our, our boat crews, um, might be more of like a boat ski, so, or skate. So we, we changed our dinner, uh, plans to go to a more, um,
It's called Fire Nice, where the kids will be involved, interchange with picking out their food. And I think they're cooking it or involved in the cooking of it. So, yeah, it's pretty exciting.
And, uh, it's, it's a little more ethical too, so they're going to get different types of flavors and, uh, it'll be a little more of an education experience. But, um, we're not going to do the dinner, or the dinner cruise this year.
And the red stuff for the tent?
They are, you know, it depends.
Too expensive. We looked into that. Tickets for like a hundred and seventy-five dollars a person. Yeah, we'll do the savings.
So the cost is about the same as last year?
A little bit more, but, um, we didn't say well apart.
It's a little bit more because we're using, um, a travel agent that we have used in the past. It's just more, it's just more effective. If we run into a running late or something, we don't have to scramble to get anywhere. We have a person from Ski ninety-three who just goes and takes care of it all. So it's worth parents doing all the legwork. So it's a lot of manpower.
Right, and you're doing, uh, many fundraisers prior to?
Yes.
And are there going to be available scholarships for individuals?
Yes. We, we, at this point, we've never tried to get down to a finance.
Yeah.
The dinner cruise, you're also taking that duck tour, right?
We are doing the ducks.
We are doing the ducks.
We are doing the ducks. It's going to be a shorter version of the ducks because of just the time, so we're not going to be able to do the hour and twenty minutes. I think it's normally, it's, it's just going to be a seventy-five minute, um, duck tour, so it's going to be shorter.
Check up on their certification.
Yeah. And, and I have to say, for all the years that we've gone, I mean, the life jackets are within grabbing reach and the, the drivers are all with. I know, and that's everybody's concern, and we discussed it with Dan. And that is a concern of parents. I mean, I have kids too. That would be a concern of mine. But they are within grabbing reach and our, our duck drivers, that just sounds so strange. They even tell you, if you want to have your, your, uh, life jacket on, you can, you can just grab it.
And if I remember, the sides aren't sealed either, or that was the problem.
There's, uh, only in foul weather are they sealed.
Yeah.
But they're just buttoned down.
Well, I'd like to, I, you know, we, if you're an indication at some point you've done a trip, I did certainly, it's a very unique thing to take middle schoolers on a trip. It brings it to a whole different level. So thank you to the staff here and everyone else who is involved in planning and, and chaperoning this trip. Appreciate it.
What's current ratio of, uh, of chaperones to students?
We have a hundred and twelve kid students in the eighth grade. This is like a really small group. So what we're going to do is we're taking three buses of forty-seven. Um, we have to leave two empty seats for the two people from Ski ninety-three. So if, if every student goes and it never gets to that, it gets to usually about ninety percent that go, um, then we can take fifteen parents, because Ski ninety-three comp's us twelve teacher chaperones to go. So, but if we, any, we're, the reason we're taking smaller buses though, because if we take a larger bus with the smaller, with the children that we have, we have to pay seventy-five dollars for each empty seat that we have on the bus. So we are limiting the number of parents that we're taking this year. This is the first time we've had to do that, but because the, the eighth grade is so small, so we're going to do it as a lottery, choosing parents to go.
Any other questions?
No, I think I've, I've gone twice with folks on board, and it's a valuable trip.
It's a great trip.
See, it's, it's amazing to see them, uh, at middle school, so you can see them transitioning to the, the more adult phase and some of the other trips. I think it's a very valuable trip.
Students still talk about it in their senior year of high school. It's like, remember that time we went to Boston?
Yeah.
Yeah, we still talk about it.
My daughter's thirty, thirty years old and she still talks about it. She was one of the second classes that went.
We were in Boston this weekend, my daughters, I don't know, I mean, they're, they went with New Health, but they, they held the science museum.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a favorite, the science museum. And I have to, I just have to put this out there. We go to the, when we do the Freedom Trail, they have the Holocaust monuments, and I don't know if anybody's ever seen it. I didn't go last year, two years ago when we went, and we walked the children through it. And they see all the numbers from the concentration camp, and there's steam coming up from underneath. And the, the kids are just like, wow. I mean, dead silence. They don't say a word.
We watch her most rowdy eighth grade students. Complete silence in that, in that, in that memorial. It's amazing to see it as they stand there and look at the numbers and then it clicks what the numbers mean. Um, it's, it's, it's one of the most educational experiences that we can, we can give the students. And it's a great time for the entire students and faculty to continue to build relationships and send our students off to the high school, ready, ready to take on the world at that point, and see a little bit of the world that we can meet.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, all of the favor? Approve. So carry. Okay, waiver agreement be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation superintendent approves the following waiver of potential conflict of interest agreement between the Board of Education, Alantia or Central School District and the Board of Education of Highland Central School District, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Seconded by Tom, seconded by Camille. Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. Lead evaluators, classroom teachers, be resolved Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approving the provision of Education Law 3012-D and Part 30-3.10 of the Region's Rules, hereby certified that the following individuals have completed all of the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of classroom teachers. Dr. Jennifer Rocker, Alantia School Assistant Principal. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Ed. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. Supplemental memorandum of agreement be resolved Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the following supplemental memorandum of agreement between the superintendent of Highland Central School District, Board of Education of Highland Central School District, and the Highland Support Association for the purpose of adding three titles to the recognition clause of the HSA agreement as presented to the Board at this meeting. Can I have a motion please? Heather, seconded by Sue.
I think if you've read the attachment, so these were just the titles that we've added in the security attendant, security officer, and the senior clerk type list. Just those were done, so we have the new contract, we just wanted to get the titles into the conversation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. Role business, Board of Education Policy Number 6121, third reading, be resolved Board of Education. Based upon the recommendation, the superintendent approves the following Board of Education policy title, Sexual Harassment of District Personnel, Number 6121, as presented to the Board at this meeting. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Camille. Discussion.
So- Yeah, so in the last meeting, there was a question about specific language, which I, I highlighted in the attachment that was there, it was about whether a report should be filed in the employee's personnel file, about whether, whether it's put there, determined by finding or no finding. And so I, I checked with our legal counsel. They said that there is no legal requirement that an investigation report be put in a person's, in, in their, their personnel file if there was not a finding of, of that. So there's, we don't have to have that in our language. So we could choose to strike that specific information there. We would need to put it in if there had been a finding. So it's, it's up to you, but there's nothing, there's no, there's nothing prohibiting us from putting it in either way.
So what's your thing, you want to leave it in there or start it?
How does administration feel, I mean, as far as programs are concerned? It's about six, someone has, if there's been no finding, do you want to leave that tarnished in the file? Or do you feel it's an indicator that might be valuable later on?
I mean, there's definitely two sides, the, the one, like you said, you don't want to tarnish someone's reputation that there doesn't need to be. On the other hand, if we think of this in the terms that we think of with bullying, you know, sometimes it's a matter of having to build a file. And so the first time that someone accuses another of a particular thing, there might not be a finding. But if we start to see a pattern, and this is, again, talking to our students, if we start to see a pattern over time, you know, that's one of the reasons that we keep the, the DASO forms is so that, wait, we're finding, you know, something's happening at lunch and something else is happening in chemistry and something else is happening, something like, you know, it gives us a little bit more information. So, you know, there's two sides of it, I mean, we are talking about adults here. So it's, it's, it has, potentially has a much more impactful result than, than a bullying report for, for a high school student might have. So I think that that's important to weigh as well.
Just worry about letting it do its best.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, in administration, though, many of us have been in Highland for a long time now, not always is that the case. And so when someone's going through a file, you're right, it can, it possibly could prejudice someone one way or the other if they, they saw that in the file.
Is there a way to put a termination if files with no finding were heard that review were? Something to that effect, to give you a little bit of both.
We don't really have that, is there a way to do it, there may be. You know, sometimes it's the case though too, where, where if there was an accusation, the accused might actually want the no finding in their file. Because in, in, in the world in which we live, sometimes there's information out there that's not completely accurate. So it is, it is a recourse for someone to say, now look, there was this investigation, there was no finding. Like, you know, I'm clear. That's important too.
It's a default, and at the same time, it's been what it says, you know, that that was the outcome. Instead of just being there with nothing written on it.
Or, right, either just have any accusation, or again, sometimes when there's no information, people make up information. So, so that's, those are the things I would concern.
I mean, I feel it's important to have, always have that paper trail.
I agree with you, Alan. And just be consistent.
Different, I mean, you wouldn't need the, the paper trail. I don't know what people are doing.
Personally, I would want it, especially with no finding.
But it, I mean, it's-
Hold on, I think that last one is a valid, I want to say is, I think it's the most, it should be the most generally.
Right, that way everyone knows there was their own investigation and that, you know.
The way we're worried now would provide that for the-
Okay, so we can, we'll move on, as Ed, ready?
And has, this policy has been reviewed by?
The council, yes.
Okay, so that will be noted? Well, it says prior to 2004.
No, it was, it really came from our legal counsel, yes, so.
So that'll be updated.
It'll go. Carly usually doesn't update it until we actually get the final approval, that's pretty much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. An update on our 2014 capital project? Do you want to have some discussion on that or?
So I know, so the RFPs for, really for the next project, which isn't the 214, but that's due Thursday, I think I mentioned.
And for management services.
For management services. For this capital project, I know that we are again wrapping up all the closeouts. I think there's, there might be one or two outstanding punchless things that have to be wrapped up. But we are still, have plenty of time, basically really, the, it's November 30th is the date. And we'll be well ahead of that to get all our paperwork into the states so that we can start collecting on the state aid on this. But so we're, we're in good shape.
And if for the rest of it, we just an update on pay automation and our smart school money, our support service met. And that's moving forward now, the groundwork is being laid out for the portion of the project that involves the security piece with new cameras, both interior and exterior, and our card access. So that's, the groundwork being laid for that as far as building the infrastructure. Currently, right now, I don't believe we're going to have the, we, we will have the cameras implemented prior to the end of the school year, from what I'm hearing. But probably not the card access at this point in time, just so there's no glitches can be worked out and we're not moving into card access come, you know, the first week in June when the rate is let out, so. That's where the project is right now, things change a lot. But for those that are curious and might be saying that we're dragging our feet with the smart school money, it's not us, Highland Central School District, or our administrative support staff. It is being held up in Albany. So those that are out there in the, in the audience, those that are out in the community, that if you have issues, please contact your legislature, your senators, your assemblymen, and voice your concern that it's taking too long for this smart, smart school money to be divvied out to the districts. And we voted on this as a state back in 2014. Here it is 2018, very, 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 very little of the money has been felt out to the districts. One of our neighboring districts has applied three times for their smart school money and been turned down each time. It's, you know, why put it out there to the, to the voters and you're not going to move and act on it? Our application for our first portion of the smart school money went in March of 2017. And here it is November of 2018, and we were just approved. So it was a delight here.
And that seems to be about the average of eighteen months.
All right, any questions on any capital project? And then we'll have a little discussion on the smart school spending, the plan, or do you want to?
Do you want to talk or you want to?
Sure.
I did talk with Carol.
Okay. Carol and I met today and we will be coming to you on December 3rd with a brief PowerPoint presentation outlining the process, the axing process as for phase one. So this will be, you have to inform the board, you have to have it on your website for 30 days, someone adopts it, it's admitted. So there's a process, yes.
And then eighteen months.
If David's going, how to spend, now we got to go through hoops to, to secure it.
Well, we even have to spend it before they'll give it to us, too, if it's not like we couldn't.
True, true.
Oh, yeah.
Does the intel plan will be, this will be considered through?
It's a mix order.
December 3rd. It'll be a little more fleshed out version of what we, we developed each and then, uh.
For the timeline.
Okay, anything for the good and welfare of the district? It's really good, huh? All of the meeting up to public comment. Okay, motion to adjourn. And before I say do that, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Ed.